June 2nd and the work session at the same evening. If I could have a motion to approve.
Of moving for June the 2nd?
Second.
And break your council.
Second. Moved and seconded in favor.
Aye.
opposed. We will adopt those two sets of minutes. The mayor's report is really short. I haven't really done anything on behalf of the city in the last two weeks. It's been a quiet couple of weeks, so. With that, I will turn to council reps, boards, and commissions and ask Councilor Guthrie to tell us about the library board.
So, one of the things we talked about, the library board, was the visioning project. There were a lot of folks that were interested about that, including some people that were not able to make the yeasty-beasty meeting. And so I assured them that even though they weren't able to make the yeasty-beasty meeting, as long as they filled out that survey, there would be ample attention paid to their various plans. At this point, the, probably the biggest thing coming out is they're looking towards the Swenson Fund and potentially the Friends of the Library to turn that community room into a little more of what we, what the folks at Western would call a smart classroom, built-in projector, built-in sound, a place to simply plug in a laptop or a computer and kind of be full up and running with the multimedia piece. So that's a little bit in the planning and how they might spend down some of the Swenson Fund dollars. And other than that, things are going well. For folks looking to take advantage of the seed lending library, they are going to be closing down that seed lending library shortly as we get out of planting season. And I just started a little herb garden in my kitchen, full of Buy Mart pots and soil and free seeds from the library. So I would encourage anybody who has an interest in getting started to take advantage of the seed lending library now. And for folks that have seeds at the end of the season they wish to donate, they'll be taking those at the library to then put into effect next season as well.
Thank you, sir. Council Johnson, Historic and Planning.
Well, I have to, plant commission, I haven't been able to go because of hearings and everything. But as of next meeting, I will be able to go for the first time this year. And historic commission, we did quite a bit and we kind of have quit for the summer and will not be meeting again until September. And the apps is pretty much on its way, which the funding or the grant runs out in August, so they have to get it done. And that's going to be done. And they made the, this is the, what they call, this is historical plaque. That will be on buildings.
Very good.
This is the, just a copy of it for here. This is the size of it and everything.
Cool.
Anyhow, they finally got that done and I had Mark make us one of the size so we could show people.
Right. Great.
Okay.
Very good. Anything else? Council Kerry?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think the, as I have it, and I missed the last free advisory board meeting, but we will be part of the Madrona Park dedication, I believe, in joint session with the Parks and Recreation Board. We'll have our meeting at that, at that dedication. And then for the committee members, they'll be a bit, a potluck and so forth afterwards, which is something that we've been doing for the last several years as a way, because, you know, trees and parks sort of go together and so we can kind of share ideas and see what's, you know, maybe going to happen on, in each area for a little better collaboration. So that's June 18th, probably more on that later on, but that'll be a nice event, 6:00 PM, I believe.
Good, thank you.
I got just a question. The trees, did they die or were those vandalized, vandalized trees that are missing?
Which where?
In the Madrona Park.
That I'm not sure.
I thought it asked. So you see some missing and that's why I'm asking.
I'm looking at the public works director and he seems to be mouthing.
Yeah, they died, they're under warranty. It's a little late in the season to replace them. The next record is going to bring them back in the fall. Okay, I just, I was down there the other day and going through it and I saw some missing, so I'm just asking what happened.
Perfect, yeah. I mean, too bad, but good solution. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any community announcements tonight? And hearing that, I will turn to the city manager.
Yep, First Note Senior Center, I think we reported previously, we had a $30,000 grant toward the expansion project. We got another $25,000 last week. So we're up to there, we need another 70, and there's more than that in the hopper at the moment, so I think it's just a matter of time. I guess we'll hope that.
Has more people showed up to see the, grant people, have they showed up to see the senior citizens?
Well, we had, we had one group that came through that was representing two different agencies.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so I think we're doing well there. Then the Monmouth Engage project, I am going to pass around, we got to the point, took all the survey responses. And got them summarized around themes. Wanted to go over those with you, so you can know where we're headed. I think we're getting kind of a final count, but they were, they're headed toward 800 surveys. And then they're saying for a town our size, you know, 300 would have been good. You know, so I think it was really good, we've had some good, good outreach, the yeasty event, showing up specifically on campus. The folks at Western have been very helpful, you know, getting set up and so we got some good numbers there. So with that, the ones that came out, as we go through the list, the first one's improved connections between university and the community. And the key thing they noted there was it was just a positive statement. It wasn't that there was an issue or there was a problem, it's just, hey, wouldn't it be cool if we were just a little tighter? And that was really what that was. And so a little bit more of a college town, joint events, partnership opportunities, you know, classes that go back and forth. And then getting people in town to go to more events on the campus. Second one was bike pedestrian friendly. Kind of like trails, bike lanes was a part of it, the Ash Creek Trail, people were aware of that. And then sidewalks, safe pedestrian crossings, we know periodically we get people interested in just, you know, condition of sidewalks or gaps in sidewalks. Improved community gathering places, and that's anything from a community center, different levels, new city hall. That's one, interesting one that keeps popping up. You just, you just wouldn't think people would care about the bureaucrats. But people really like us to have a new city hall. Amptia and the park, we might be able to do something about that one. I actually had a couple people that were filling it out and they said, oh, we're building one next week. They go, okay. And then just kind of gathering places. And in some cases, it's interesting when you look at the list here, sometimes just awareness. You know, there's a pool in Independence, and we have a skate park, and there's a disc golf course in different places. But sometimes it might just be awareness. And the last one is the ever-present more. You know, just grocery store, restaurants, you know, boutique shops, some different things to kind of lay out there. So, so what happened with that is, and this will now go out to the community and try to get a kind of feel for like if there's one of those that jump out more than the others, and would you be willing to help out on something, any ideas? I think the one that I liked from this list even more so was the things that were not noted. They said typically when you do a survey like this, there are certain themes that come with most towns. And the ones that weren't present in our town was crime, social issues, and a really neat one for us, college students. They did not have people saying, darn, college students in my neighborhood or, and it doesn't exist, I mean, just. So you get an overall feeling that people are really like Monmouth, they like what we're doing, they like living here, but you can always do better. And so if we can just keep chipping away at things, then that's a pretty good place to be. So like I said, so next step will be getting kind of these, kind of fine-tuned a little bit, surveys will come out probably at least by Monday. We'll keep pushing through. Input, we'll use the July 4th festival for input, one of the music in the park, and then come August, you'll see a final plan. Any questions on that?
I have one. I really appreciate the effort down at the Tousie Park, you know, the market. A lot of my friends went down there and filled out down there. They really appreciate that. So, and that Tuesday, whatever, in the marketplace.
But it was a good deal because quite few people said they filled out the deals.
Getting 800 is amazing, that's wonderful.
Yeah, it was, it was a good number. And then just a last note, we've, we had our bond person come and talk to us about refinancing some of our bonds. And the first one was MyNet, trying to get to that with all the backlog we had in the finance department. But while they're looking at that, and that's pretty much a given, we'll be doing that. We're also going to have them take a look at the old electric ones. Remember when we did the conservation work, the line, the substation, we'll take a look at that one. And also when we did the wastewater plant. We'll just take a look at that one just to see if there's any, any value in doing those. So we'll get, go on those pretty soon.
When you say no brainer, I apologize for being tardy. What is that? We'll definitely do that, what's the timeframe on that? Because it's going to be a substantial amount of savings if we can get, you know, get that.
Yeah, he said, if we start now, we keep on track, it'd probably be two months from now before we'd actually go to market. And the unfortunate one now is that the bond markets are getting weird again. You know, the Fed makes a little comment and then things get strange, they, they go up, they go down, so we're getting a little bit of creep. But I think the idea of those, they're such a nice savings from where it is right now, even if it went up a little bit, it's still going to be, it's going to be worth it still.
To do so.
You'd have to have, kind of like what happened last time when it went up. Occurred in a gate.
No.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of not thinking that Monmouth controls the bond markets in the world. You know, when we go out, they spike.
No, if it spikes, sit on it and wait.
Yeah, but that's a, if that's another option, yeah.
Is Pur's in that too?
No, actually those ones, we sorted through how those are structured, you can't do anything with those.
Can't, okay.
We checked, but we can't.
Anything else?
Last question about the Monmouth Engage, did anything about housing or housing market or anything like that come up or nothing?
No.
Answer to you, nothing like that.
Good. Okay. Any other questions, council? Hearing that, we'll move to citizen comments. Please state your name and city for the record.
Yes, sir. Short chair. My name is Marilyn Morton and I live at 1312 B Street in Independence. I also serve on Independence City Council and I have a question this evening about collaborating between a couple of counselors on an issue that was raised at our city council meeting at the high school back in April. We had a student come and speak to the council about the inequities in curfew times between the two cities. Monmouth is very straightforward, I believe it says 11 o'clock on weeknights and midnight on weekends. Independence unfortunately says, if you're between the age of this and this, it's 10 o'clock on weeknights. And if you're between the age of this and this, it's 11 o'clock on weeknights. And it is so confusing that I hear from the police chief that the officers don't quite know, so they kind of wait till after midnight and then they know everybody's illegal. So what the students suggested, and it's a very good idea, is that the two cities collaborate and figure out a joint curfew time. And I'm thinking the chances of Monmouth having the best answer in this one are pretty darn good. But I did want to make the effort to come and see if a counselor would be willing to sit down for a meeting with me so that we can present a joint statement to both councils and say we'd like to have a uniform curfew across the two cities.
Anybody up for that?
I'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Council Kerry.
Thank you. And I also wanted to say that the community magazine that is now publishing, it's still publishing on the first of the month, the next issue is coming out July 1st. It's full of all kinds of entertainment from both communities. If anybody wants anything in it, please let me know by the 25th of June. And I want you to know that our Google metrics show that about 600 people open it within the first half an hour of receiving the notice. And Marshall and I are also talking about another possible collaborative opportunity, but there will be more on that later on.
Maybe during work session, we can do that idea.
Okay.
Thanks.
Before you have a lead, I just want to say thank you for coming and offering up a collaboration between the cities. And if it starts here, that's great, but I think more of this would be welcomed. And go figure, it's students proposing an idea for us to collaborate.
I like the idea, students proposing that collaboration is the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? And with that, we will turn to the business agenda. And our first item is to adopt audit deficiency resolution. And for what it's worth, Scott, I got a missive from the League of Orient City in our packet for the board meeting that's coming up this week. And they got the same kind of notice that we did. I think, you know, we were speculating that they were picking and choosing. I think they're looking at everybody with increased vigor perhaps. So, anyway. Mark, what do you got?
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. So we received in May a letter from the Secretary of State Audit Division with a list of six deficiencies in our audit. And it was a concern, obviously. And I, I've not received one before, so I did a little research, talked to our auditors. And basically what I learned is that periodically they will review audits from all the cities and counties. They don't do every one every year, but they do it as a general practice to, to try to, you know, help cities and counties have good reporting. And so I called Mr. Hopkins, Phil Hopkins, who sent the letter. The first thing I thought when I read the letter was that we would need to reissue the audit. And he said, no, that's not, that's not it. We just want you to look at these things, provide a response back. And they wanted the, the board to be a part of that, that's why the resolution. And so we worked with our auditor, and Tom's here to answer any questions that he might have. When we looked through the six deficiencies, we knew about the last one that they mentioned because that was part of the audit comments, and we talked about that when we presented the audit. The others, though, three of the other five were format-related. And it's simply just an item that we need to correct going forward. And the other two were, had to do with financial amounts in the audit. The transfer item that they noted related to a gap versus budgetary basis difference. And then the one that was specific to MyNet and the receivable in the MyNet fund was simply, there's actually two receivables there. The cities, the money that the city has receivable from MyNet or the debt. Also, there's money there that relates to Milanet and the original investment the city made there. And so that's the difference there. So the response that we put together indicates all of that. And so that's presented for your consideration this evening.
I'd like to note that there was, there were, there were some deficiencies that weren't really deficiencies. They were just misunderstandings on the, the part of the, of the city. Now, there were some things that needed to be corrected, some, some that were actual mistakes. But of the however many deficiencies, there were two or three of them that were just flat out, they didn't understand what was going on with the books in the same way that you all did. And so I think it's important to acknowledge that, is that everybody gets it wrong, including the auditors from time to time.
You know, I look at the list of six, Marshall, just to tag on with your comment. I look at the list of six items, and we have three formatting issues, two no correction needed, and one was a one-time occurrence. That's pretty darn good. Very good. Anybody else have any comments, questions for Mark or?
Well, I, I just, you know, I mean, formatting issues, three of them. I mean, is that substantive, is that a substantive formatting problem? Or is it just something that they would prefer? And if it's something they would prefer, then why doesn't, why doesn't Tom know about that?
So when I asked him that, I asked him if, if those formatting things were needing us to reissue the audit, if it was substantive in a way that it would impact a reader. And he said, no, absolutely not, we would have got a different letter if that was the case. So, so he was not, it was, and he wasn't even on the fence about that. He was like, no, no, you don't need to reissue. And so I guess from that, it told me that it was something that was not, it was something that he was pointing out that should be corrected, but it wasn't necessary to change this audit. If that's the case, I guess I didn't feel like that was at as high of a level of urgency, which is something we need to incorporate into our future audits.
Yeah, I, I.
Comments on that?
It, it just seems that, that, I'm assuming that that fits the standard practices, you know, accounting practices, whatever that acronym is. I mean, it fits.
They were obviously deficiencies. They were, they weren't, they weren't correct, and he pointed that out.
I mean, I, I personally, I'm, I'm fully supportive of, of the division of audits doing these sorts of things for things that, you know, so there are corrected procedures if nothing else, but, but there's, yeah. I'll just leave it at that. And then I would hope that there, that there are things that are valuable to us. We get it rather than just something that fills out a box on the floor.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, I mean, we're all under the same rules, regulations for the state. I mean, everybody, every town, every, whatever it is, county is all basically, I'm just saying. So I'm wondering, it's kind of odd that they, after four or five times, this is the first time they caught some of this stuff. But, I mean, we all have to follow the same guidelines, so that's why we're changing it. And we thank them for finding the problem, but no consequence, nothing, you know, good audit. But I'm just saying, why didn't the auditor know that we weren't in the format too? That's his job, to help you, that's what I'm saying.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a resolution we need to pass to call for addressing of these deficiencies. And this would be resolution number 1795. There is a proposed motion on the back of the first page of the staff report.
I move approval of resolution 1795, a resolution addressing deficiencies in the city of Monmouth's fiscal year 1314 financial audit report.
Moved and seconded, Phil.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie.
Aye.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
And with that. Send your letter, Mark. Okay, next item is the budget hearing for the fiscal year 1516 city of Monmouth budget. It was approved by the budget committee and my, just want to make sure I'm on. Yeah, okay, okay. I was off with my list of resolutions here. So with that, I will open the hearing, if anyone wishes to comment on the budget as approved by the budget committee. Speaking now. Tom, you have a smile on your face, you're fine with it, okay. So, and with that, I would close the hearing. Are there any comments, questions, statements from council regarding the budget?
Just want to thank everybody in the budget committee this year, once again, it went pretty smooth.
It's a once-a-year agony and we get through it pretty cleanly and I appreciate everybody who shows up for that process. And with that.
I propose a motion. I move to adopt ordinance.
Do we?
No, it's just a hearing.
Yeah, this is, this is just a hearing, so there's no, no motion required.
It's coming up next. I'm one ahead, okay.
You're, yeah, you're on the back of the next page. Two pages stuck together, I think we're all. So. With that, we're done with that item, correct, Lane?
Yep.
And I will turn to the next item on the agenda, which is budget transfers and a resolution approving those budget transfers. And Mark, if you could fill us in on this item.
Yeah, so your staff report has a list of resolution or transfers that we would propose by resolution. Oregon budget law fortunately allows for the moving of funds between categories to, within guidelines to allow for some flexibility as, as things get down to the end of the year. We anticipate that there will be, either we'll be close to or slightly above appropriations. And where we get kind of close, we like to still make an adjustment, even if it doesn't happen, just so that way we don't have a, a budget law violation. So in the general fund, we've got three different departments that we're looking at doing an adjustment for. The first one is in management finance for a server and a firewall, both of which weren't budgeted. The firewall relates to our finance software. In order to communicate electronically, like share screens with our vendor, we needed to upgrade our, our firewall to be able to enable the IT folks to, to set that up so we could, we could contact them and share screens. It makes the training much, much better. So that was the first one. And then the, the server was out of, moved to the, the new police station. Our plan initially was to move our existing server and hardware from the Power Lake building and move it to the police department. When we looked at that, the server is close enough to being out of warranty that it, it just seemed like it would be a, we were going to have to buy a server next year, probably early in the year. And there would have been downtime and some significant kind of, you know, issues around trying to keep people up to do work and email and all of that. And so the decision was that we should just go ahead and, and make the expense now rather than next year. So that the money, it's really kind of a timing thing. And it just seemed like it was a better way to handle that. So that's why we did that. As far as the Parks and Recreation, that's in the area of personal services. And you'll see this down in the water fund as well. What happens is we budget every year for public works across four different funds. General fund and then sewer water and streets. And we just budget kind of based on a set allocation that's fairly consistent year to year. But we typically will have some funds go up a little where their savings and other, because they, they just, it's the actual costs of the payroll are, are charged to the departments, to the funds by however many hours they spend. So if they spend more time than we budgeted, we have to bump that up. And then that results in less time in another fund they're, they're spending, so. And there's contingency funds to accommodate that, and we typically will do that each year. So Parks got that as well as the water fund. For municipal court, that last one, we actually, because of the timing of our conversion for court, because we did the court conversion before we did the finance conversion. But they, they billed us for the first half of the court, court conversion, like almost two years ago. And then they finally finished it up. And our billing for the completion came in like August or September after our books were closed and we couldn't, we couldn't prove it back. So, so that's part of that. And then the other is we anticipate having higher assessments than we budgeted. So with some additional revenues that are, that are coming in there. So, so total adjustment there would be 60,000 out of the general fund contingency. And then for the sewer fund, that is simply a precautionary adjustment in the materials and services line. It's for franchise fees. If we have additional revenues in sewer, then franchise fee expense goes up. And if we go over by a dollar even, we'll, we'll be out of compliance. So this is just a precautionary one in case we need it. And you'll see that as well in the water fund. So water fund, you've got personnel services for that reason. And I already mentioned the, the personnel services item for the additional time spent there. The last one is the building fund. Again, the personnel services will come in real close, and so that's just a precautionary transfer. And then permit surcharges, looks like that one is going to be close as well, so we wanted to put that on the nudge also, so. So as far as how all this relates to financial impact, these were all anticipated. And so they were all included in our beginning working capital numbers for the, the next year's budget. So none of these are, are things that would impact our, our closing this year or our beginning numbers for next year. These were all, they were all part of the process.
Any questions for Mark on this? This would be resolution number 1796.
I move adoption of resolution 1796, a resolution approving appropriation transfers for fiscal year 1415 and directing the finance director to make appropriate entries to record the appropriations transfers in the fiscal year 1415 city budget documents.
Second. Moved and seconded.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie.
Mm-hmm.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer.
Did you say Schaefer?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
And with that, we will direct Mark to shift some money from one fund to the other. Uh, okay. I think I got two copies of that one in my packet, because I'm working on the same item again. Let me jump ahead to, uh, resolution adopting the budget. And, Mark?
Okay, so with the current year that we're in, so then we go to next year's budget, and we are looking to have you adopt next year's budget. So what you see in the, in the actual resolution is what was approved by the Budget Committee. And that gets approved by both department and category as identified in here. So this would be the process to legally adopt the approved budget as approved by the Budget Committee.
Are there any questions for Mark on this? Since we were all there and making the budget.
So we're going to be approving the budget with those deficiencies that we just okayed?
Actually, the deficiencies relate to the fiscal year fourteen fourteen.
Oh, fourteen.
Yeah. But they factored into the beginning balance for this budget.
Okay.
Okay, this would be resolution seventeen ninety-seven. And this is one of those folks, when I started, we used to have a morning meeting on June twenty-ninth or something to adopt the budget, because we wanted to make sure that there weren't any last-minute changes. And Scott and Mark kind of got hold of that process and said, we can do that. So I just want to mention that, you know, this is, this is a much improved process since eight and a half years ago, and you remember those morning meetings, I'm sure, Counselor Milligan?
Yeah, I've had several of them.
Yeah, yeah. So, at any rate, resolution seventeen ninety-seven.
I move approval of resolution seventeen ninety-seven, a resolution adopting the budget, making appropriations, levying and, levying ad valorem.
Ad valorem.
Ad valorem taxes, and adopting the capital improvements plan for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen fiscal year.
Second. Moved and seconded.
Who had the second one?
Okay, Phyllis?
Counselor Guthrie.
Yes, please.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer.
Aye.
And with that, we will move forward with that budget for next year. Our next item is a resolution adopting comp plan adjustment for our non-representative, non-represented employees. And who gets this one? Is this year again, Mark, or?
So each year, we budget for, based on the Portland CPAW Consumer Price Index, we budget a cost of living allowance adjustment for the non-represented employees. So that year, this year, that index showed two point one percent, and so that was included in the personnel service lines in the budget, as well as in the corrected comp plan that we talked about at the Budget Committee. So, that's for your consideration this evening.
Okay, are there any questions on the upcoming comp plan for our non-represented employees? And seeing none, this would be resolution seventeen ninety-eight. So I'd like to move on to.
I move approval of resolution seventeen ninety-eight, a resolution adopting an increase in the compensation levels for non-represented city employees in the amount of two point one zero percent over the compensation level for the same employee group during fiscal year fourteen fifteen.
Second. Moved and seconded, Phyllis?
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie.
Aye.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
And with that, we will adopt that resolution. Here comes my very favorite resolution every year, resolution seventeen ninety-nine, which basically says to the state, yes, we will take the money that you are offering to us for the coming fiscal year. So if failure to adopt this resolution means that we would not get that, those funds, therefore I would urge passage of this resolution. Seventeen ninety-nine, are there any questions for staff? Okay.
I move to adopt a resolution seventeen ninety-nine, a resolution requiring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Second. Moved and seconded, Phyllis?
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer.
Aye.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie.
Aye.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Okay, state, we will take it. Um, it's unanimous. Uh, next item is our investment policy. This was an item that we started running a few years ago, and it comes back around every year, so is this, Mark, can?
Yeah, a few years back, I inquired on this with the, the Oregon State Treasurer of Office, and learned that we needed to re-adopt this each year, regardless of whether we made any changes to the policy. And I think that is built into the policy, just so that there is continual consideration of our investments and, and our policies around them, so, so that policy is presented for your consideration again this year, and we are not proposing any changes to it, so because of that, it would simply be a readoption.
And I would note that the approved investment instruments are, for the most part, very, very conservative, and those that are not hugely conservative are pretty darn conservative and are kept to a minimum of a very small maximum of our total, even possible, much less to be actually invested there, so, and I appreciate that caution. Anyone have any comments or questions for staff on this? This would be, uh, resolution eighteen hundred.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the, of resolution eighteen hundred, which readops the City of Monmouth's investment policy.
Second. Moved and seconded, Phyllis?
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie.
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
And with that, we will move those forward, continue those. Resolution eighteen hundred, this is nice to see this one come back around, we had this two years ago, is that right, Scott? And then coming back around this year, and I'll just let you speak to it.
Yeah, thank you. So we're actually doing a power and light rate adjustment, actually a decrease of three percent, and this fund was discussed specifically during the budget process, and the bottom line at a, at a simple level is that we're, we're a public entity, we don't need to make a profit, we don't have shareholders. And in our case, it's, it's that three bears principle, if you take care of your system properly, I mean, obviously, we could do rate decreases by not taking care of anything, that's not what we're doing. We have the ability to take care of our system, we're proactive with maintenance, we're taking care of things, capital that's needed, we're generating enough cash on annual basis, and we still have adequate reserves, and we looked at that, and said, you know what, we actually can back that down a little bit and then help our residents out. So we are proposing a three percent rate decrease, giving you an idea of impact, large business in town's actually over three thousand dollars a year in savings, small business, kind of like a Main Street business, be like seventy-seven dollars, average home about fifty-six dollars, and an apartment about twenty-eight. So it affects everybody that pays the utility bill. So if you're so disposed, we'd appreciate you passing that resolution, and then that would go into effect on the next cycle. July first. Can you show up on August, please?
Actually, it'll show up on the July first.
Oh, okay.
Because it'd be effective May fifteenth.
Right, okay, we do back that, okay.
Say that again?
So the resolution would make the rate change effective May fifteenth, and since our billing cycle is the fifteenth to the fifteenth, then that May fifteenth to June fifteenth bill comes out July first, so the.
People will see it, I mean.
Yeah.
Do you have a total number of, the number of savings or lost, actually, I should say lost funds, the power line will lose, what's that, three percent? Does he have?
Yeah, we have that, just under.
What's the decrease?
It was under three million.
Of course, a building, if we had more load like those, say, an education building on campus coming on, it could totally offset the decrease.
But we're continuing to do.
It's about three hundred and fifty thousand.
Four million is pretty much possible.
Three fifty-ish, I think.
It's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
I've got a comment and a question. So number one, I think this is an excellent illustration of the difference between a public municipal utility and, and a private utility, and I think that we see this repeated in, in many of our public services, that when we're building out, when we incur an initial expense, that yes, it's, it's, it's an expense to the community, and the people through their utility bills, through their use of the service, have to pay for it, but in the long run, it makes a big difference when these extra revenues come in, the fact that they're not lining the pockets of shareholders, they're not lining the pockets of millionaires and billionaires somewhere else, that they're going back to the people. And so I think it's an excellent illustration of how many services, when structured like a public utility, really work to the benefit of the citizen here in Monmouth, here in Oregon. The question that I have goes to, and this may be a question that Chuck would have to answer, I see some of the, the expenses to the city broken out for the sodium lights, the sodium streetlights, and we've transferred a lot of those to LED, and I didn't see a similar breakout for the cost of running LEDs, the cost to the city of running LEDs. Is there such a breakout? It wasn't in our material?
Oh, actually, we can look that up in the street fund. One thing to clarify, we were off on the three fifty. It's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars that were, the revenue reduction, the three percent rate decrease. And can you look up the savings in the street fund on the?
Yeah, it was, it was like thirty-three thousand dollars.
That's what I can remember.
Marshall, I'm not, I'm not sure about this, although I believe this is a schedule for people who want to put in a barnyard security light.
These are, these are not for the city, this is for residential?
Yes, these are when, when folks want to have that security light, it's not a street light, this is.
Got it, I'm sorry, I was confused, because it says City of Monmouth at the top.
Rather than running, running the electricity to the home and then having to run a line out two meters, sometimes you can just tap, tap the line at the post.
Got it, I was looking at page seven of ten.
Yeah.
Thank you, that makes more sense.
And so discharge your flat rate and not have to meter it that way.
Right, I wondered why we weren't metering the city for actual usage and doing it for light, but now that makes sense, thank you.
But yes, there was a savings to the street fund by installing a whole lot of LED.
Like seventy thousand or something?
Forty-four. Yeah, forty-four. And probably more to come, because we're not quite on the.
And savings that potentially keeps us in that lower-cost tier of electric usage overall, once again reducing the cost for the citizens.
Yeah, and we've been, we've been.
I'm not trying to pat ourselves on the back too hard here, but I think this is what good fiscal response.
What we've been able to do is, it's, it's close to offsetting, we're actually growing in population, and then the savings, it just keeps it kind of in balance, so we're not, we're not pushing up into that higher tier because of that.
Yeah. Are we anticipating the power prices to go up five percent every few years? Is that, is that an all?
Probably, there is, those like seven, they, they're usually a little bit conservative. We push them on various issues, they're, they've gotten a lot more cautious, Fonderville will make sure that they've got like backup power, and so they actually go on the market, and the downside is if they go on the market and they're cautious, and then it turns out they really didn't need it, we get to buy it anyhow. And so, and Chuck, a lot of times, we visit meetings, we're trying to force them to get a little bit less cautious in how they approach their power purchases, but they're a lot bigger than we are.
I'm a little concerned about generation on rivers this year, and the fire drop situation. And, and I'd just like to note that this is now two, three percent decreases in, over the course of three years.
And it's flattened the off-year price.
Right, and if, and if we use this figure that you've given us, Scott, fifty-six dollars for the average home in Monmouth in savings for the year, that would be double that for two years, a hundred and twelve dollars, which is, I believe, more than that average home paid, is paying each year for the police station. So, you know, overall, we're continuing to do really good work on being, not just fiscally responsible, but paying attention to the fact that, you know, folks don't have Monmouth's pockets, and we're trying to be responsible in how we spend the money that people trust us with. And, you know, I just, when, when this one came around, I was, you know, that one really hit me, is we're offsetting now completely that police station cost. So, yeah, thanks a lot for that. Any other comments or?
I might point something, that's just Marshall, you know, and we are utility, public utility, which is a good deal, which then gives us the advantage to buy from Fonderville, but if you're a private corporation, you pretty much can't buy from Fonderville. So the rate structure, and all taxpayers pay for Fonderville over fifty years, I mean, not just us, but all over the United States, so I expect Fonderville sooner or later, that the people on the East Coast are going to make Fonderville raise their rates more to help pay back their debt cycle, but it, it just gives us advantage, same as in the state of Washington, all the public utilities up there, but some of their rates are really high because of their expansion up there too, so. I mean, it's all kind, all I'm saying, it's all just because we're a utility, we just have the opportunity to buy from, and we don't have to pay for any generation plants, that's the reason.
And of course, Washington people in Washington are still saying, whoops!
Yep.
For the nuclear plants that they didn't quite finish building. So, okay, this would be resolution eighteen oh one, to set the rates and charges for electric service, who would like to?
I move to approval of resolution eighteen oh one, setting rates and charges for the electric utility service and repealing prior resolutions.
Second. Moved and seconded, Phyllis?
Counselor Schaefer.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie.
Aye.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
And with that, we will adopt those new lower rates. Uh, next item up is crosswalks, and I think we have a staff switch here. This is an item that I think I brought counsel's attention last meeting, because the last meeting was the night after the last traffic safety meeting, and so I kind of gave you a preview on this. Go, Russ.
Thank you. Mayor and counsel, what I have in front of you is a resolution to adopt the installation of some crosswalks on North Monmouth Avenue. Western Oregon University is in the process of, of constructing Richard Woodcock Education Center, and with that process, they've requested two additional crosswalks there in the, at the north end of campus. This building will increase pedestrian traffic in the area, justifying the addition of some crosswalks, it'll also help to maintain the twenty mile an hour speed through that area. Financial implications, the university will pay for the installation of these crosswalks as a part of their construction process, and then the Public Works Department will inspect both the, the plan review and the construction of those crosswalks as they go in. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We want a raised crosswalk and one not.
That's correct.
So I have a question, can, can we do a swap? Can we like give them two and take one away? And there's, one of, one of the concerns I have is that Church and, and, and Monmouth is that with two crosswalks in that intersection, there's a lot of times where the pedestrians don't pay attention to the traffic, and so they'll lock a car in the middle of the intersection because you've got crosswalks going at the same time. So I was just curious if, and I don't want to slow this down for that, but I just, if we could relook at that crosswalk situation.
So you're asking me to procrastinate and take one out, Steve, or just take it down to ungrade?
No, but I'm, I'm using the opportunity of this motion to bring up another issue that I don't want to confuse with this issue.
Okay.
I could certainly take it to the Traffic Safety Commission at their next meeting, if that would be acceptable.
That would be acceptable, yes. I guess I'm, I'm confused, are you talking about removing the crosswalk that runs north-south on the west side? What crosswalk are you talking about removing? One of the east-west. Yeah. There, there are two of them that are right on each side of the, of Church Street. Okay. And, and I'll ask that we don't go any further conversation on that intersection that we talked about, the two crosswalks that are going in.
So turning focus back to the Richard Woodcock Education Center and its need for new crosswalks, Steve having successfully raised a red flag up the street, which Russ will look into. This would be a motion eighteen oh two, if there are no other questions.
Well, I, I'll.
I mean, resolution eighteen oh two.
I'll tell you why I'm going to vote yes on this, and Steve, this isn't, this isn't in contrast or opposition to what you're saying. in contrast or opposition to what you're saying, um, I view a day when it makes very little sense for vehicle traffic to go north-south on Monmouth Avenue anyway, I know that increases with the complexity of who owns that street, but we've got ninety-nine north-south, we've got Stadium Drive that runs just two blocks to the west of that.
Fire.
Fire is the deal.
Fire is, I'll tell you that right now, it's fire access.
Well, I think, I, I think that you can always make accommodations for emergency vehicles, um, but it sure seems to me that when you look at the magnitudes, uh, of order of pedestrian traffic on that street compared to pretty much any other street around there, and the, the propensity of the university to grow in size, it makes less and less sense for us to focus on vehicular traffic on that one very small stretch of road in this much larger city. So, I'm going to vote yes on this, because I think the slower the traffic goes on our road, the better for everybody.
Okay, are there any other comments or?
Is it really true that a raised crosswalk or a speed bump slows anyone down?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Unless you want to go airborne, hey, and some people do it.
Yeah.
I'm more concerned with you going airborne.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move the City of Mon, uh, Monmouth City Council to adopt resolution eighteen oh-two, approving installation and addition of, of two additional crosswalks on that Monmouth Avenue adjacent to the Richard Woodcock Education Center.
Second.
Moved in second, Phil.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer.
Aye.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie.
Aye.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, don't make speed bumps, I mean, crosswalks. And. Let me catch up my agenda here, hang on.
Number ten.
Yep. Okay, so we have, uh, first and second readings of an ordinance adopting a comp plan amendment, and let me read by title quickly, and this will stand for first and second reading. An ordinance amending the Monmouth Comprehensive Plan map designation for a certain parcel of real property identified as Assessor Map Number eight four three zero C D, tax lots one zero four and one seven zero one, from public to medium density residential, and amending the Monmouth zoning map designation for said parcel from public services to medium density, excuse me, medium density residential, and declaring an emergency. This would be ordinance number one three five eight.
And just as a refresher, um, if this passes unanimously, you can adopt this ordinance first reading, second reading, in one meeting, the emergency clause, it would go into effect immediately, there is no opposition to this, uh, zone change or comp plan amendment.
And this is our former power station, um, out at the end of Broad Street.
And we have a developer rate.
Okay, any other questions for staff? You may have a motion that you'd love to make?
I move at the first and second reading adoption of the ordinance enacting conferency plan map amendment, zone change fifteen dash oh-one, amending the Monmouth Conferency Plan map and zone, zoning map.
And I would doubt that that is ordinance one three five eight. Second. Moved in seconded.
I'd like to ask for a friendly amendment, did that include declaring an emergency?
That's in the title of the.
In the title.
Yeah.
Good point, you sort of have that reflected in the.
Okay.
Yep.
Do I have, can I go on, or do I need to vote on the amendment?
You're good.
Okay, so.
Unless there's an objection to it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, um, and Phil.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie.
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer.
Aye.
And with that, we will adopt that ordinance and it shall go into effect as it is an emergency. And, the last item on our agenda tonight is our fifteen sixteen council goals.
Yes, thank you, uh, recently did a goal setting process in March, uh, you took a look at the proposed goals at your last meeting, and if you so desire, your goals for twenty fifteen sixteen would be obtain additional street funding, complete the visioning engagement project, instruct senior center expansion project, determine method for improving the city hall facility, and build Main Street Park empty. Any questions?
I'd like to approve the meeting, uh, we're already fully engaged in a couple of them.
Yeah, makes sense.
Question, if, uh, we were to accomplish a couple of these goals fairly quickly, and we wanted to add more couples on there, could those be done outside our annual retreat?
Oh, you can always come up with things.
Just wanted to make sure.
You can do it every single meeting if you want to.
Okay.
We'd prefer not.
Didn't we have a brief discussion about having a midterm kind of, not necessarily goal-setting session, but kind of, to look back at them and see?
Well, one thing you can think about is we, we, you have a quarterly report, all the projects come to you on a quarterly basis, so if, if you, when the, you know, January one comes around, you want to take a look and see our capacity.
See a hundred percent, eighty percent, ninety-five percent.
Yeah, we can sure look at, there's something else we could add.
Okay.
The, the reason why I ask is, other things that we talked about, that they could make the list, but there's no sense in, in putting fifty things on the list and losing focus on these few good things that we have got.
And there may be some things that come out of visioning that could be, that could be slid in on a, you know, sort of an immediate basis.
Yep.
That don't require long-term sort of reviews and so forth.
So, this requires just a simple load of council, and I think we can, you know, dispense with a roll call and just ask for a motion to adopt these council goals.
I recommend we approve the fifteen sixteen goals as presented.
Set it. Was that a second, John?
Yes.
Moved in seconded, in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, which brings us to the end of the, uh, agenda, is there any council comments tonight?
Sure, I wanted to, um, kind of in the vein of what, uh, Marshall was talking about in, in responsible governance, um, Polk County, uh, citizens just passed the levy authorization of forty-five cents a thousand for property taxes for the public safety levy, and, um, most people don't realize, I don't think, that the county actually only assessed thirty cents a thousand of the forty-five cents that they were authorized to levy, because there was the secure rural schools funding that came from the federal government, in, in a way in which they could offset this first year of the levy, and so, I just wanted to, you know, that, there are several examples of responsible governance, and a lot of times the county doesn't get the credit that they deserve for some of their, their good fiscal work, uh, and I just wanted to bring that to the light.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, thank you, that's good to know.
And I was unaware of that, and, but it, that's one of those ones that, you know, we saw, uh, a long string of letters of both support and condemnation, I guess for lack of a better term, for that doubt measure, and, and, uh, it would be really, you know, good to see some letters mentioning to Polk County's populace that the tax increase they approved came at sixty-six percent of what they thought it was going to be.
For this year.
Right.
For this year.
And then we'll get the money next year, then we can go to the.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would just like to, uh, sort of jump, I, I guess it's sort of a bandwagon, uh, the, uh, the electric, uh, utility rate reduction, uh, I think is, is a sign, as you suggested, Marshall, of good government, we have media in the room, and, and I'm, uh, I'm anticipating that that'll be a, um, significantly portrayed in the, uh, what's going on in Monmouth. And the second thing that I would note is that the Walgreens Corner continues to degrade, that's ninety-nine and fifty-one.
Yes.
Uh, that, that is going to be a continual problem, and, and, I, I know they've got a mower, I'm sure they'll be in sometime soon, uh, but, uh, it is, as we've said, it, it is in the center of our, uh, what most people perceive as the center of our town, and it's, it's an eyesore, and, uh, there's no real resolution to that unless we begin to find some sort of solution with the property owners, and I understand the property owners have property rights and all of that, however, I believe there's a solution somewhere in the weeds.
There's some weeds.
There are, and there'll be more.
Okay. Anybody else with comments?
Mayor, um, being tardy, I did not get to report on Parks and Rec, and I don't know if anybody mentioned, but, uh, the Parks and Rec meeting was, um, uh, we did not have a meeting because we are having a joint meeting with the tree advisory board, and then, um, at Madrona Park tomorrow evening at six P M. to do a dedication.
Is it tomorrow or?
Oh, Thursday, Thursday, I'm sorry.
And that is a dedication to park, and there's a community potluck, so show up with your goodies.
Yes, it's a good gathering.
Yep, and, uh, anything else? Okay, we have two items left tonight, one is a city council work session, the other is urban renewal, the work session is a one item, one I think will be relatively short, uh, Urban Renewal Agency is effectively one item, um, which I think will be relatively short, I would propose that we stay up front, uh, and with that, I would ask a motion to adjourn the city council meeting, um, until after urban renewal, and we first handle the urban renewal agency, and then we come back together for the work session. Some move? Some move, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so with that, I'll close the, uh, council meeting and turn my little gavel over, we open the urban renewal agency meeting of Tuesday, June sixteenth, and I will note that, uh, all members of the council have removed their councillor hat and have replaced them with members of the, uh, urban renewal agency, uh, we, um, have first on the agenda, uh, citizen comments, seeing none, uh, we have a consent calendar consisting of minutes from the urban renewal meeting of June second. I move approval of the amendment.
Second.
Moved in seconded, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and we move to the business agenda, the first item is a public hearing on the fourteen fifteen budget, opening the hearing, and this is the budget that's approved by the, uh, budget committee, as if anyone would like to speak to that.
Yeah, um, they actually, you read the agenda right, but that should be two thousand fifteen sixteen budget.
Oh, two thousand fifteen sixteen budget, my.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you, my page says fourteen fifteen, and I didn't think.
You read it correctly.
I stopped thinking and started reading, so, sorry. So, let me try that again, opening the public hearing on the fifteen sixteen budget, which was approved by the budget committee, and is there any of you who would like to speak to that budget? I'm seeing that, I'll close the, the budget hearing, and turn to the budget proper and ask Mark to fill us in.
So, um, for your consideration this evening, is the, uh, budget to, or the adopting of the budget for the urban renewal agency, um, as approved by the budget committee, there were two, um, hearings to, uh, progress to this point, first before the budget committee, um, on the ninth of May, and then the second this evening, so, um, similar to what we did earlier, this would simply appropriate expenditures, um, legally adopt them for, uh, for our budget for next year.
Okay, this would be, uh, resolution of twenty-six for the, uh, for the urban renewal agency. Anyone would like to?
You said twenty-six, sorry.
Twenty-six.
Get it, Jesse.
I move approval of resolution twenty-six, a resolution adopting the budget-making appropriations and a declaration of taxing incre-.
Increment.
Increment for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen fiscal year.
Second.
Moved in seconded, Phil.
Mr. Carey.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Silvernagle.
Aye.
Mr. Schaefer.
Aye.
Mr. Milligan.
Aye.